I call to order this meeting of the Gary Sanitary District, this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Monday, December 2nd, 2019. Prior to starting the meeting, I would like to ask if you have a cellphone or pager that you turn it to vibrate, silent, or off as to not disrupt the meeting while it's in process. If you do receive a call or page during the meeting, we ask that you step out into the hallway to take it again as to not disrupt the meeting. We will start this meeting the way we do every meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Will you stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Tramell Rags.
Present.
Commissioner Maurice Mayborn.
Present.
Commissioner Olaf Morris.
Present.
Commissioner Charles Jackson.
Present.
Commissioner Angela Jones.
Present.
Attorney Jewel Harris, Jr.
Present.
Executive Director Daniel Vakari.
Present.
Director of Administration Vern White.
Present.
And that's the end of roll call.
Thank you. With five commissioners here, we do have a quorum to do business. Next on the agenda is certification. I, Tramell Rags, certify that prior to this public meeting, an executive session was held, and that there was nothing that was discussed during this executive session except the items that were indicated on the executive session notice posted in compliance with Indiana Code 5-14-1.5. Also, no final decisions were made during this executive session in compliance with the same statute. If there is any commissioner that dissents this certification, they may do so now. Hearing none, we'll move along the agenda to minutes. What is the pleasure of the board regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the executive session, the regular meeting minutes of November the 18th, 2019.
Second it, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Abstain. Okay. Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Okay, my turn now. Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn and Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
We have a vote of four ayes and one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, the minutes have been approved. Moving along the agenda, next we will go to new business. And for new business, I will turn it over to the executive director, Mr. Daniel Vakari.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask for Vern White to provide you Item 2A.
Thank you, Director. Item 2A, a motion to approve GSD payroll earnings for period ending October 28, 2019, through November 10, 2019, in the amount of $239,462. I recommend approval as stated in the motion.
You've heard the overview and recommendation as it relates to 2A. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval as stated in the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
The vote is four ayes and one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, 2A has been approved.
Item 2B is a motion to approve GSD Resolution Number SD-19-11, authorizing the sale of bonds of the district through the Hammond Local Public Improvement Bond Bank. This resolution authorizes the sale of the bonds through the Hammond Local Public Improvement Bond Bank. And it's the bonds from Resolutions SD-11-43, and then much more recent, the SD-19-10, approved at the last meeting. Both of those bonds through refunding through the Hammond Bond Bank is what we're asking the board to authorize today.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 2B. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
Vote is four ayes, one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, 2B has been approved.
Item 2C is a motion to approve contract amendments for the professional service contracts for year 2018 and year 2019 between the Gary Sanitary District and Whittaker &amp; Associates. This motion is asking the board for approval to match those years' contracts with services actually rendered. I recommend approval.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 2C. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
The vote is five ayes, zero noes.
With five ayes and zero noes, 2C has been approved.
And that's all for new business today.
Thank you. Moving along our agenda, next we come to claims. And for claims, I will turn it over to the Director of Administration, Ms. Vern White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 3A, GSD claims numbers 4,566 through 4,674 in the amount of $726,808.32. I recommend approval and ratification of today's GSD claims.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 3A. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Approval and ratification.
Approval and ratification.
Second it, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
The vote is five ayes, zero noes.
With five ayes and zero noes, 3A has been approved.
That completes today's GSD claims.
Thank you. Moving along our agenda, next we have information updates. And our first information update will come from our Plant Superintendent, Ms. Rhonda Anderson.
Good morning. The NWIOA December meeting will be hosted by Gary Sanitary District this Thursday, December 5th. And the speakers will be Amanda Candida, Jim Fitzpatrick, and Heather Cheslick from Black &amp; Beach on dual-use filtration for peak flow management. And if that sounds familiar, we were scheduled to have them present at our October meeting, but there was a mix-up, so we're happy to have them for the December meeting. At 11:30 on December 13th, there will be a 90% design meeting on the boiler replacement project. Our boilers are beyond their useful life. They heat our digesters to a temperature that is conducive to the bacteria that convert organic matter in the sludge to methane gas. It reduces the sludge volume for a more stable sludge that doesn't attract rodent. So this is very important. Our boilers are in pretty bad shape. So we are looking forward to replacing them. Also, on December 13th, after the boiler meeting, we will have a 3D model walkthrough and design progress meeting regarding the grit system improvement project. As you may recall, the grit classifiers are way beyond their useful life as well. And we're replacing them with grit washers, which are better at separating the organics from the end organics, resulting in a drier grit and reduce disposal cost. The grit pumps and piping are also being replaced. Budget proposals for 2020 have been submitted, and they are in the process of being reviewed. And our performance reviews for the year 2019 are also in process. Five of us participated in using behavior-based interviewing to select the right candidate training in a webinar. Behavior-based interviews focus on a candidate's past behavior in specific work-related situations, with the logic being that past behavior best predicts future performance. On December 12th, we'll have our monthly operations call with CDM Smith to review data trends and discuss opportunities to tweak plant performance. And just wanted to make you aware that through October 31st, we treated 20% more water than the same time period in 2018. That was mostly due to the heavy rains that we had in May and April and in June. Sweeney Electric has completed the collections garage lighting fixture replacement project. We expect the plant's street-like fixtures and raw sewage pump room light fixtures to be, those replacements to be completed by the end of this week. And we are also expecting approximately $12,000 rebate from NIPSCO because of this project. And finally, we are looking to hire certified wastewater treatment plant operators. And if they are not already certified, college graduates who have had a STEM major, science, technology, engineering, or math, we will consider those candidates as well. That's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you want.
Any questions for the Plant Superintendent?
I have one. When are you expecting to have a walkthrough again for the board?
Whenever you want.
Well, we thought we'd ask you first because you have the planning. So do that, and I'm sure that most of us would be able to sort of stroll and walk. It's a lot of walking going through this plant. Number two, you were saying you were looking for what now?
Operators.
Operators.
Certified.
Can we use individuals within as a mover to cover those particular jobs?
If they are interested and if they already have certification. Short of already having certification, we are considering candidates that have degrees in sciences, engineering, or math. So to my knowledge, there aren't any internal candidates that are interested at this point, but...
And the ones that we have, what levels are average? You said two or four?
We, all but one of our current operators have Class 4 certification. The only reason they don't have a Class 4 certification is because they don't have the experience that's required to sit for that exam. They've already passed the class three, and they will be taking Class 4 as soon as they have the required experience.
Okay, one other is the blow up building. Where are we now? Purification, they add the, let's say, air filtration project?
I'm sorry.
The air filtration project over here?
Airation.
Airation.
Airation, yes, okay. Where are we now on that?
I'm not sure. We're having a meeting tomorrow, a conference call.
Is that your area, Mr. Tom?
It's both of ours.
Well, you can give her a hand.
We're in the supplemental phase right now, so I don't plan on, I don't think we're going to be mobilizing anytime soon.
You haven't started new construction on it yet, have you?
No.
Okay, that's my concern.
First thing they're going to do is demolition of our current blowers, two of our current blowers, and replace those blowers. And so, soon.
Okay, so we'll go take down, I'll accept one.
Accept two.
Accept two, yes, in case we need an extra.
And we're also going to rent a blower.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from the board, Ms. Anderson?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Our next information update will be in reference to construction activities, and that will come from Mr. Eric Tonk.
Good morning, board. Here to give a quick update on current construction projects. I guess I can start with the Erickson project, but they are still in the supplemental phase of this. We have not agreed upon a schedule that was submitted. Contractor and the consultant engineer are still working out the details regarding the schedule of the project. And once that's approved, I'm sure we'll see more progress on that project. Back onto my report, the Clark Road Improvements Project. Again, we're still waiting for that one item regarding the NIPSCO valve needs to get lowered in order for that last little section of concrete sidewalk to get forward. The Ambridge Javelin Project should be being completed this week. They have to just line a few more segments of sewers. So this project should be getting closed out shortly. The Lake Street Road Construction Project is, for this phase, is coming towards an end. They have to do some concrete sidewalks and walkways to houses and driveways. They're hoping that the weather cooperates to get this done still this year. Along with the bike path, the edges are to be concrete, and they're supposed to be textured, like bumps, to let the bikeless know they're getting off track. They would wish to get that forward, but again, that's weather-dependent. The Forest Avenue Stormwater Project, that one is complete. They were able to pour the asphalt, the surface course of the asphalt in. So that one's, we just got to do the final walkthrough for that project. The 20th Avenue Project, 20th Place, I should say. There was a delay. They installed a wrong curb inlet, so they had to cut that out and install the proper one. I believe they got the surface course in, but the base asphalt did get in. That was as of Wednesday before the holidays, so I haven't heard an update on that project yet. And that's all I have for now.
All right. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Tonk? Thank you, Mr. Tonk. Next on our agenda is discussion, and that's discussion amongst members of the board. And before I go to the board, before discussion, I'm going to take my prerogative as the chair to speak first. And I'm going to use this time to welcome and introduce our new board member. As the general public knows, we have been operating with four of a five-member board for a while now, and we have our fifth board member. It is Attorney Angela Jones, here from the city of Gary. And I would like the public to welcome the board, as well as the staff, in welcoming her to the GSD family. And I'm going to give her this opportunity to, as I've introduced her, say a few words about herself. Commissioner Jones.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Angela E. Jones, because there's another attorney who shares my name. I was born and raised here in Gary, graduated from Roosevelt High School in 1985. I have an independent practice here in the Miller area, and I reside there as well. I am a public defender for Lake County Government and the Felony Division for 25 years now. And I look forward to serving you all.
All right, and we look forward to her expertise and perspective going forward with the Gary Sanitary, as well as the Stormwater Management Districts. So now, I'll turn it over to the board for discussion, if there's any board member wishes to discuss at this time. Okay, hearing none. Ms. Lee, are there any requests to speak?
No, sir.
With no requests to speak, next on our agenda is adjournment. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
We are adjourned. I now call to order this meeting of the Gary Stormwater Management District, this regular meeting of the Board of Directors for Monday, December 2nd, 2019. First on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Lee.
Director Tramell Rags.
Present.
Director Maurice Mayborn.
Present.
Director Olaf Morris.
Present.
Director Charles Jackson.
Present.
Director Angela Jones.
Present.
Attorney Jewel Harris, Jr.
Present.
Executive Director Daniel Vakari.
Present.
Director of Administration Vern White.
Present.
And that's the end of roll call.
Thank you. With five directors here, we have a quorum to do business. Next on the agenda is certification. I, Tramell Rags, certify that prior to this meeting, an executive session was held, and that there was nothing that was discussed during that executive session except the items that were posted on the executive session notice in compliance with Indiana Code 5-14-1.5. Also, there were no final actions taken during that executive session in compliance with the same statute. If there is any director that dissents this certification, they may do so now. Hearing none, we'll move along to the minutes. What is the pleasure of the board regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I've made the motion that we approve the executive session and regular meeting minutes of November the 18th, 2019.
Second it, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion?
2018, is it 2019? What is it, 19 or 18?
19.
That's right.
The motion's...
Okay.
Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Director Jones.
Abstain.
Director Jackson.
Yes.
Director Morris.
Yes.
Director Mayborn.
Yes.
Director Rags.
Yes.
The vote is four ayes, one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, the minutes have been approved. Moving along the agenda, we will come to new business. And for new business, I will turn it over to the executive director, Mr. Daniel Vakari.
Thank you, Chairman. For Items 2A and 2B, I'd like for Vern White to provide you the overview.
Thank you. Director, Item 2A, a motion to approve GSWMD payroll earnings for period ending October 28th, 2019, through November 10th, 2019, in the amount of $11,385.42. I recommend approval as stated in the motion.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 2A. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval.
Second in the motion. Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Director Jones.
Abstain.
Director Jackson.
Yes.
Director Morris.
Yes.
Director Mayborn.
Yes.
Director Rags.
Yes.
The vote is four ayes and one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, 2A has been approved.
Item 2B, a motion to approve GSWMD Resolution Number SW-19-03, authorizing closing out and transferring trust Indiana GSWMD Fund 677 dormant bank accounts to Fifth Third Bank GSWMD Fund 677 in the amount of $16,487.62. Requesting to transfer this amount to Fifth Third. These accounts are dormant, so I recommend approval as stated in the motion.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 2B. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Director Jones.
Yes.
Director Jackson.
Yes.
Director Morris.
Yes.
Director Mayborn.
Yes.
Director Rags.
Yes.
The vote is five ayes, zero noes.
With five ayes and zero noes, 2B has been approved.
Item 2C is a motion to approve and award a bid to Alex McSewers for stormwater drainage improvements near Acheson Street and Old Holbert Road in a not-to-exceed amount of $30,050.0. We solicited work, I'm sorry, bids from three contractors, I'm sorry, 13 contractors with three responding. This includes cleaning an existing storm sewer inlet system at this intersection and after the cleaning, to add improvements to it by incorporating 100 feet additional of perforated 24-inch pipe. And our engineers, including Eric Tonk and Kolo Owosika, have calculated that this will handle a 100-year storm event. It's something that we've been looking at as a problem area for some time now, and this, I believe, will improve that intersection to a point to eliminate complaints we have from stormwater pounding at that area. So I recommend approval of Item 2C.
All right, you've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 2C. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Director Jones.
Abstain.
Director Jackson.
Yes.
Director Morris.
Yes.
Director Mayborn.
Yes.
Director Rags.
Yes.
The vote is four ayes with one abstaining vote.
With four ayes and one abstention, 2C has been approved.
That's all for new business today.
Thank you. Moving along our agenda, we next come to claims. And for claims, I will turn it over to the Director of Administration, Ms. Vern White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 3A, GSWM, the claims number is 501 through 508 in the amount of $413,826.39. I recommend approval and ratification of today's stormwater claims.
You've heard the overview and recommendation with regard to 3A. What is the pleasure of the board?
Some move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Ms. Lee.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayborn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rags.
Yes.
The vote is five ayes, zero noes.
With five ayes and zero noes, the claims have been approved.
That completes today's stormwater claim items.
Thank you. Moving along our agenda, next we come to information updates. And our first information update is going to be from American Structure Point, and that's going to come from Mr. Chris Murphy.
Morning, directors. Chris Murphy with Structure Point. Briefly, on our assignments with regard to engineering for stormwater improvement projects, our engineers are working full speed ahead on the next phase of Lake Street construction, which will be from the end of this year's construction activity, which ends at about the area of Lake Street and Third intersection and move further north toward Lake Street Beach with the improvements, the same improvements that we've installed between Third and Seventh, continuing with a bike path, multi-use path facility from the commuter rail station all the way to Lake Street Beach. So our engineers are working on that, preparing for a bid documents for sometime in the spring of 2020 to let that next phase of the construction, reconstruction of Lake Street. With that, I'm going to ask John Tucker with our company to provide an update on our construction activities. John?
Good morning, directors. A few construction updates for you. As Mr. Tonk mentioned earlier, Ambridge Delining Project should wrap up this week, weather-dependent. They did put on two crews and working some weekends, so to wrap up that project. Lake Street, the other ongoing project, current phasing, will be wrapping up for this year. Pavement's complete. All the pavement markings, temporary striping, was complete last Wednesday. So if you go out there, you actually, it looks like a road with the stripings out there. That will be kind of how the surface will be left until the spring. We are still working on concrete work with the carriage walks, service walks between Third and Fourth for those residents. And then we'll continue with as much concrete as we possibly can with weather-dependent for the cycle track. There is two concrete ribbons that can be done this year as well. So that's the plan moving forward. Also, the parking lot improvements. The previous pavement is complete. That lot is also striped. In the Plaza area, the concrete work is complete. There will be some restoration work and pavers to be done in the spring. And the goal still is to put trees and shrubs still this year. There was a meeting with the landscape contractor early last week to kind of say what we're looking for this year and what they can accomplish, which looks like it's going to be around there, and then we'll still have the remaining plantings come spring. With that being said, I'll open it up for any other questions that the board may have.
Any questions for the gentlemen from Structure Point?
I usually do an annual here for two weeks. Tour through Lake Street. Others I haven't visited lately, but I will. But you're improving.
Thank you. It's moving now. You can get through. There's some daily restrictions when they do work, of course. But this morning was free-flowing. I was out there this morning just to kind of double-check too, make sure there was no other little things to report to the board. But everything looks like it's on path to what we wanted to accomplish this year.
A lot of business people are happy to see that.
Yes, yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you, board.
I'd like to invite all the directors to take the opportunity to spend a few minutes on Lake Street. The streetlights are up and operating. Much of the sidewalk is in place. The road pavement's in place. The parking lot's in place. So it really truly is a remarkable difference in downtown Lake Street community. And to see what the total improvement of the construction will eventually provide with the landscaping and the cycle track complete. I think it's going to be a very transformative project for the downtown Miller community. Also, I want to wish you all happy holidays. If you don't have an opportunity to meet again between now and the holidays, I appreciate working with you this year and look forward to working with you in 2020. Thank you, directors.
Thank you. Our next information update will come from Robinson Engineering, and that will come from Mr. Ron Smith.
Good afternoon, directors. Ron Smith with Robinson Engineering, providing an update on some of the design projects that we currently are working on and also some of the construction projects. Eric Tonk gave a brief update on the 20th Place and also the Forest and Locust Project. Both of those projects do have the final surface on there. Just some minor items that are left. Some of the Parkway grading and landscaping remain... Some of the parkway grading and landscaping remains on both of those projects. The Warren Street Sewer Feasibility Study, the technical memo and also the preliminary design is completed. I have a meeting this afternoon with Executive Director Dan Bakari to go over those cost estimates, and there's also three design options that we will review, and hopefully he'll make a decision on one. The Sixth Place Design Project, that Sixth Place from Lake Street going to Miller Avenue, that design is 50% completed. We'll be meeting with Executive Director Dan Bakari to provide an update and overview on that project and get the engineers' input before we move forward on any more of the design. That's all I have for this morning. Welcome aboard, Attorney Angela E. Jones, and again, everyone have a happy holiday, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Smith?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.